It is me.
Huh? It's you?
Good morning. Welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, April 29th, 2015. We're in the Senator hearing room at Courthouse Square in Salem, Oregon. We'll begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have a number of very interesting issues before us today, and the first one is a presentation, sorry about that, from SEDCOR, Strategic Economic Development Corporation. And we have Chad Freeman and Nick Harville here that are going to present their quarterly report. So thank you for coming over and welcome.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us. Kind of as I was preparing the comments for a quarterly report on economic development, I was looking at some last ones, and we are now in the sixth year of recovery, I think is the official news, and we continue to see the trends that have continued around slow, consistent growth. And as, excuse me, as Nick and I were just thinking about in terms of what does that mean for our community, we're looking at historically low unemployment rates, continued optimism, but it's also, I think, the other part that we all see on a day-to-day is it's not, it's still not where we, I think, we think we should be. A lot of those jobs are maybe not the jobs we envisioned. So try, so I think that really brings out what our role is here, is try to grow and continue to grow and create new jobs and new investment in our region. As you'll see in the last quarter, this is now being the third quarter of our year, interest in terms of for new investment within our region continues to grow, a little bit slower pace than last year, predicated on the fact that we really, when we look at, when we're speaking with companies that are looking at moving into the region, we don't have a tremendous amount of available buildings, so that they're, any company looking at siting or doing a new expansion within Marion, or Marion County, has to really look at building a new building, and I think that has been a little bit of a hurdle in terms of folks looking at making that new investment. That being said, I think there are some great examples of companies doing that. In March of this year, Garmin opened up their new $15 million facility for, that they've announced can host somewhere between 70 and 150 new engineering positions. It is already, the building is already quite full. It's pretty amazing. They've got 500, I think it's 540 people in there right now, across the, working across a variety of industries, some doing, working on the call center, but a lot on the research and development, and some on the manufacturing side. Been a great project and one that, just having been done in the last quarter, great new addition to our, to our region. So the other work in terms of, so we continue to see, as I said, some of the local companies continuing to build new projects. Nick can talk a little bit more about that as well in terms of what we see every day. But the other issue we really, hurdle we really looked at this next year is what is our plan for the next couple of years? And in your packet, I think you'll see our strategic plan for the next three years. Really want to take this chance to, to thank Commissioner Cameron as well for his help, our executive council, helping to drive that. And the strategic plan this year, we tried to really keep that very, very simple in terms of what our goals are, and because what we do with economic development, I think, is pretty, pretty straightforward, but we also want to make sure we stay within that. We want to help local companies create or retain jobs. Helping our local companies, helping the folks here in our region grow is our number one thing, and we've very clearly seen, seen some benefit from doing that in the last two years, $100 million of projects and 1,300 new and retained jobs. I think we're pretty, we're successful at that, but we need to keep doing that. Support investment in our region that brings in new jobs. We're always looking to work with companies that are bringing in new technologies, new ideas and new investment. And part of that then is the, to promote the competitive advantages of the region. Why locate here? Why in Oregon? And why in Marion County? And then lastly, our strategic plan was to provide benefit for our members, to help folks understand the value of what we do, and to continue to support that public-private partnership. So that was really the, the outcome of our strategic plan work, that it will guide our work for the next three years. So that's really a focus of what we've been doing in the last quarter, and we'll turn it over to, to Nick as well to speak a little, and that is on some of the more local issues as well.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Real quickly, I'll go through a quick list. We continue to work on the Business Retention and Expansion Program with several of the Silverton is now picking their leadership team to guide their project. Stateon is having training meetings. The nice thing about the BRNE when we get it done is that we will have a good strategic plan, or the good solid data for each community to have a good, solid strategic plan. With that, we'll have information that we can work with. As Chad said, we've had a lot of expansion activity. It's really nice to go into industrial parks, no matter where I am in the county, and know that there's one or two projects going on in almost every industrial park in Marion County. Mayor Figley's here. There's two projects in the works in Woodburn. There's one in Hubbard. If you go out to Stateon and go down Wilco Road, you'll see that there's an expansion for La Taux Harvesters going on. Norm didn't waste any time. There are projects almost everywhere. And as I said at the breakfast in Silverton last Wednesday, it's nice to go by a building that was empty for six years in Silverton and see the parking lot two-thirds full with employees. And they're up to about 70 employees now, and I think Josh is probably going to be hiring 10 to 15 more real soon. The other big activity is we've been working with a lot of school districts. Been working with Matt Henry and a couple of his school board members up in Jervis to do career technical education based mainly on agriculture and ag technology. That's been a pretty exciting project to be involved in. Andy Gardner out in Stateon also has now six different tracks for, for skill development, trade skill development, that they're going to offer next year to kids from ninth grade to 12th, and it's all based on some of our work for, that came out of our iMom program, identifying skills. But it's kind of an exciting time here in the county.
Yeah, just building just a little bit, wanted to thank the Commissioners as well for, I think during the last quarter, you guys had hosted a meeting up in the Sandy Am Canyon to really help kind of coordinate and pull together some resources and some game plans about how to, how to work with that community to grow jobs. Something that I think was really valuable in a way. Your county staff did a fantastic job in terms of making sure that that, that event was well-run and thoughtful, but also run on time in a very crisp, efficient manner. So I want to thank you for your leadership on that and trying to help us, help us work up there as well, so, thank you.
One other thing I would mention, the Department of Labor is making grant funds available. There are five grant applications in the state of Oregon for this pre-apprentice apprenticeship program. We're working with other partners, including Bowley and Shemecata Community College, to apply for one of those grants. The funds would be used to, to train 500 people within five years in a pre-apprentice and apprenticeship program, and it sounds like we have a pretty good chance of, of getting that. We got letters of support from companies. The total, yesterday by the deadline, we had 40 letters of support. And tomorrow morning, we have a meeting with Shemecata Community College about a one-year certificate program. It's not a, it's not a mill right program, but it's providing people with fundamental skills to go to work in food processing, manufacturing, and actually, kids could take classes in high school and get college credit.
Very good. Commissioner Cameron's writing notes here, so I know he has a few comments and questions.
Oh, is this time?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, thank you. Thanks to both of you for coming and sharing, and Nick, I just wanted to say thank you for the tours that you've set up for myself and I think Sarah from our community services department who's helping with economic development. Those tours, interesting, I wish people who are listening could, I wish we could take videos and, and do a little five minute, in fact, that's not a bad idea, to do a little five-minute, you know, spiel on what we're learning on those, because you have a wealth of knowledge as you travel around the counties. But I thought it was really interesting, especially the last two, one, Stefan Systems, where we actually walked into the building that's out in the middle of Hal Prairie Road, where people wouldn't even think it's there, and, and we walked into the building, and he's got this map of the world, and where every one of his machines are throughout this world, and the jobs that are created in Marion County because of the worldwide trade. And here we have this tough, tough situation in our port that we've all talked about that's really impacted. In fact, we've lost a business recently out in Stateon that employed, what, 250 people, probably, or 220, I can't remember what it was. And the straw that broke the camel's back was probably that port issue on Mastercraft. And then the, the last one that we did just this last week, and I think this was really interesting, we toured Wilson, Wilson Construction and their new facility in Woodburn. And in talking with Tony about those jobs, they're, they employ about 700 people in that company based out of Canby, but they're at the Aurora Airport for their flight operations, and then they're in Wilson, or Woodburn for this new facility. Of the 700 people, 300, I think he said, in the field, there's 500 in the field or so, 300 of those people, not necessarily college educated, are making between $150,000 and $250,000 a year. And one of the things that, that struck me was kids in high school getting the message out to the schools of that you could go out there and get a job like that, and especially if you're an extreme sports guy and you like to hang from hang gliders or whatever, because these guys are going up on wires. Wilson does installation of utilities throughout the country. They, they don't do much worldwide, but they go throughout all the United States and into Canada. So I want to thank you for the exposure, and not only your reports back to us, but all the things that are happening as a result of, of the education process that's going on, and the coordination, Chad, with you, sitting on our Economic Development Advisory Board, Regional Solutions, we need a little work there, not you personally, but they're coming on May 24th. They've asked to have a meeting here in Marion County in the morning, so, with their Regional Solutions team, 22nd. It's Friday before Memorial Weekend, that's all I remember, so I'll rearrange my schedule. And they're coming here, and Tamara and I spoke yesterday about what, they asked us what we want to put forth as projects, and we're going to continue to put forth the canyon issue between, because we just think that's a, a real priority. We're doing fairly well in, in the other areas, as, as you spoke to, but the canyon still needs a lot of help, so we're going to do that. But I want to thank you today for coming forward and all the work you're doing that you didn't even talk about today, so, thank you, Madam Chair, for letting me go on a little while.
That's good. Comments, questions?
Well, I'm still trying to figure out why he looks at me when he talks about hanging on a wire. I just didn't quite get that connection. Chad, I had Nick, oh, just minor thing, I'm, I'm looking and I see your report addressed to Polk County, City of Salem, and it brought up the idea, like, do you feel like our local governments are pretty well-coordinated? Are we all on the same page? The right answer is everything's well, but let me know.
So, just to clarify, in terms of, as, if the local governments or the cities working well together and together as a region, was that?
In terms of economic strategy?
I would say that one, that we as a, as a region function very well, because I think it's pretty clear that, that an employee can, that somebody, an individual can work in a company, whether you live in Salem and you can work in Dallas, or Monmouth, or Woodburn, or even from, across the region, the commute patterns are pretty consistent. So I think we all see that as a region that we can live and work and commute together. I think each community does have its own idea and agenda in terms of where they want their future to go, which is always healthy as well as, as communities. I think that's part of what we're trying to do as well with the Business Retention and Expansion work that, that Nick is leading up, is to try to really help the communities and cities understand what their role is, or what, what their opportunities can be, so that they can have a realistic strategy, and then to roll those up together so that we can find other areas that we can work together to, to all make sure that all the communities collectively are working in the, in the same direction.
And one other thought, and it was Nick talking about, you know, no buildings available. First I thought, well, gee, if I want to start a new company, then I build what I want, but as I thought about it more, that isn't the reality. That probably only works if you're an established business and want to go expand somewhere, but if you're new and wanting to try a new idea or tap a new market, you need to be able to get in somewhere pretty quick, and that's the problem is.
Yeah, and we've seen that, and we're starting to see some new developments starting in terms of developers and building owners building buildings, maybe without, without having a tenant wind up because they see this demand as well, and so we're really starting to see that, and I think that's, that's been good news for, for us in terms of what we, we see developing, but ongoing continued pressure in terms of companies are, are interested in, in being here, and the existing companies are growing and looking for space.
Great. Thank you.
So just a couple of things that percolated in my mind as you were talking. One, you've heard the theme about the Sandy Am Canyon, you mentioned going up there, and Kevin talked about it. So, a couple of questions on that. What were your impressions of the meeting? How do you think SEDCOR can actually be of value in this conversation? Then I guess I'll add a third one, because a lot of the needs that were expressed were infrastructure needs, water, sewer, maybe broadband, and how do you see that playing out?
I would, my gut, and I'll turn some of that over, Nick knows that canyon as well, quite well. I mean, what I think our, our role can be is try to help and coordinate and be the voice of, of business in terms of with the, particularly those traded sector companies that are there, and trying to help them understand the role of infrastructure as well. You know, having water and sewer and power in a community, I mean, that's, you have to have those in order to run a successful business. So I think having those resources there and updated, because I think that's really the biggest issue up there, is many of the investments haven't been made now for years, are going to be really useful and important in order to can maintain the integrity of those communities. I think what we can do as well is try to bring those, those, like you said, the business, voice of business to the table, as well as some of the resources that we may know, but again, many of those came, came to bear at that, that meeting. The, the first question you'd started with was in terms of my impression of the meeting, I thought it was a great first step, great way to outline, here, here's some of the packages, here's some of the, the plans that we could see as a community. One of my key takeaways is, was I think that bundling, for each of those communities to succeed, they're going to need to work together, and I think that was the key piece of being able to lay that framework of how do we work together in order to get what we all need to be successful. And I think that was a fantastic first step.
Okay.
We've had conversations, Allison McKenzie and several others, about doing the BRNE in the canyon, and BRNE will help.
Now, what is that?
Business Retention and Expansion Program will help those communities find the commonalities between them. They know most of them, but this would put it in writing so that they can prioritize their efforts. It'll also help them decide what kind of companies and what kind of entities they can attract up there. The reality of, of having a major manufacturer up there isn't likely because of the distance simply from I-5, and until the infrastructure gets in up there, it'll be, it would be difficult. But hopefully, the, the Business Retention and Expansion Program will help move them down the road a little further. I was up there last week, and it surprised me that one of the major employers up there, and I sat in his conference room, and I asked him, where do a lot of his employees come from? And they don't come from the canyon. He said that a majority of his people carpool and are from Kaiser, and drive up to Lyons every day, which really surprised me. But it shows the interdependence of all the communities in Marion County on all these companies that we have in the county.
That's interesting. Did you?
Yeah, just, it's so true, Nick, what you're saying, you build it and they'll come. If we build the infrastructure, we put the businesses there, people will commute. Wilsonville, for example, 93% of the people that work in Wilsonville do not live there.
Nope.
And so, you know, Woodburn, they're going to be here today to talk about some other things. We, we put some infrastructure in place in some places where we could have industrial activity, and I think there's some space up there in that canyon. I know that there, there's some wood manufacturing companies that have been looking in our area, and they could potentially be there if we had the brownfields issues cleaned up, and there's some, there's some real opportunity for us to, employees can be mobile, as we know, happens everywhere, so that's a good point. The other thing I wanted to point out that you just did last week, which I thought was really educational for me, was the site location tour that you took, and then the expert that you had talk about. Maybe talk about the Mill Creek facility in a little bit more detail and where we're at with that. Chad, could you?
Absolutely. So last week, we had an opportunity to work with a global site selector who's worked with projects for the last 30 years, and when I say projects in this case, he's worked with large companies that are trying to cite their next expansion. And what we see particularly is we don't have, we referenced earlier, the lack of buildings, most of our work is, that we see for new, new companies coming in aren't folks that are moving their community, moving from their community, they're folks that are looking at expanding into the West Coast. How do, where do I build my next plant on the West Coast so that I can serve the West Coast market, so that I can have access to Asia? That's really kind of the business question that we get a lot. What makes our region stand out is the Mill Creek Corporate Center from the standpoint that we have large industrial sites that we can cite projects from two acres up to 500 acres within two miles of I-5 with direct access, and that really is shovel-ready and ready to go. And the, the takeaway that I took from that site selector, so we brought him in both to, to help us understand, both to, to highlight the, the strengths we have as a, as a region, as well as with that industrial park, but the thing that he's, that I, that I always took, took away with is that he loved how ready it was to go. He said that it's, it's here, it's flat, you've got, already have companies already there with Home Depot, FedEx, and then FedEx did an expansion this year, so they're continuing to buy in, continue to make the investment. He saw that really as a, as a strength, as a, some point that could drive not only our, the Salem community, but the whole region as well. So that was a, it was, I got a ton of value out of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much for coming for this report, and it sounds like good things are happening.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, no one signed up under public comment? Did anyone come in, wants to speak? We'll move to the consent calendar.
Madam Chair, if I could, I'd make a motion to approve the consent calendar this morning. On that, under Legal Business Services Risk Management, we approve a settlement agreement in U.S. District Court, case number 614-CV00319-AA. It's Epps versus Marion County. Public Works noticed a bid award to Pittman Plumbing and Heating LLC for $234,000 for the replacement of four rooftop air conditioning units on Public Works Building 1. Treasurer approved orders regarding petty cash and change fund accounts for the following departments. This is all big stuff. Reduce business service petty cash account from 200 to 100. Reclassify and increase law library petty cash account from 25 to a $35 change fund account. Establish a $50 petty cash account for legal counsel. Establish a $30 change fund account for legal counsel. And reclassify sheriff's office petty cash fund to a change fund in the amount of $200. I'm wondering if we couldn't get a few quarters for parking meters, but it wasn't on there, and that's all we have this morning.
So we're waiting for a second.
Oh, I'm second in the motion. I was just pointing out some numbers.
Right. So we have a motion and a second, and it looks like Gloria's the big winner here with the petty, with the petty cash and the change fund. So any discussion on any of the items?
No.
Those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, those items are approved. Now, we have three items today under action, no public hearings. The first two items are under Health, and that we are going to consider approval of an order appointing Kyle McMahon to replace Kevin Henson on the Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee to a term ending January 31st, 2017. And then we're also going to appoint Rob and Chitwood to the same committee, Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee, but we'll take them up one at a time, is that right? Okay? So Rod, you are on deck.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Rod Cawkins, and today I'm here in my capacity as Ambulance Service Area Administrator for Marion County. We're here to consider, as you said, two orders appointing new members to the Marion County Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee. That advisory committee is one of many volunteer opportunities for folks to contribute to our community here in Marion County, and it relies on volunteers to make it work. And I think that, as Kathy Crocker is sitting over there, will tell you that we have hundreds and hundreds of volunteers in Marion County that contribute to this community. This is one such committee. We will have some openings even after these appointments, so those of you who might be interested in the wonderful world of ambulances, I would encourage you to look into that opportunity. So we have two individuals who are willing to serve today, and the first order is to appoint Kyle McMahon, who's here with me right now, from Marion County Fire District Number One, to replace Kevin Henson, who was a member of the committee, but is right now taking care of an ailing parent and is no longer able to serve. So before we get into the order, I'd like to give Kyle a chance to say something about his background and interest in the committee.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having me. I'm Kyle McMahon, Deputy Fire Chief with Marion County Fire District Number One. I've been with Marion County Fire District since 2001, been in the fire service since 1993, started as a student firefighter with the Woodburn Fire District and rode up with Woodburn Ambulance. Been a paramedic since 2000, so I've served on the ambulances since I started in 2001 with Marion County and worked my way up through paramedic, engineer, captain, most recently battalion chief, before I got my promotion to Deputy Fire Chief. During that time, I've also, was also the captain in charge of EMS operations, where made sure the ambulances were in service, worked on the regional protocols for all of us that, to take care of patients, kind of give us the standing orders or the guidelines of what to do for the patients, and we got that group, which put a large majority of Marion and Polk County agencies all under one protocols. I've attended a few of the ASA committee meetings as a guest, think it's just the next step to help guide the ambulance service since I've been on the operations side, to come kind of be on the little bit of the administration side.
Questions?
Very good. Well, thank you. We appreciate you were being willing to be on the committee, and I think they're doing really well, too. When I started in 2003, things were just a little bit rocky in the ambulance world, and this group has really helped turn that around, and I also want to acknowledge when Rod said he was the administrator, that was one of the commitments he made when he signed up for this job, is to take on the job of running that committee, and Sean Baird is, is he still the chair, is Sean?
Sean is still the chair. He could not be here this, this morning.
But he's done an absolutely fantastic job being chair also and pulling everyone together, so, and I noticed on your application, you said you volunteered at Pringle Elementary and Judson Middle School, and my three children went to Pringle and Judson also, so.
Excellent schools.
Yes, very good. Any questions for Kyle?
No, just a comment, because with his experience in Woodburn, he mentioned he started, and then the regional interest, seems like he's a perfect candidate to fill this spot that looks at the entire county, and very much appreciative of you coming forward.
So, maybe a couple of comments. So, maybe a couple of comments. One is that the order that's before you is for a term that ends January thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. We have staggered terms on the committee, so not everybody's term ends the same year. And the other provision of the Ambulance Service Advisory Committee bylaws say that they're supposed to give you a thumbs up or a thumbs down in terms of recommendation for your approval. And the committee was unanimous in voting for approval of both the candidates today.
Very good.
Oh, and one other thing I'd like to mention is, I just want to thank that this is a commitment of time from the fire district and from Kyle's other duties. And I just want to recognize Chief Riley here in the audience today, who is willing to make that commitment to have Kyle serve on the committee. Thank you, Chief.
All right, so do we have a motion then to approve this order?
So, Madam Chair, thank you for your service, all of you that are in uniform today. I'll move approval of an order appointing Kyle McMahon to replace Kevin Henson on the Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee for a term ending January thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the order. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All right, you're official. Now the real work begins, right? Okay, so then the next item is to appoint Robyn Chitwood to the Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee.
Before we start, I got to visit with Robyn just a little bit before the meeting. But you'll find his application kind of blank. So, he promised he'd fill in everything about his life and his interests in this interview.
All right, very good. Rod?
Okay, so I don't have anything else to add, other than to say that I want to appreciate Chief Niblock's willingness to have Robyn Chitwood serve on our committee as well. This will be part of his duties as, part of his duties for Salem Fire Department. And the rest of what I said before kind of applies to this order as well.
Very good.
But maybe Robyn can say a bit about his background.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Robyn Chitwood with Salem Fire. I have been here twenty-four years in October. I've been in the fire service. I started back in nineteen eighty-five as a volunteer with Polk County Fire. Did my two years at Schumecata for paramedic. Did leave the area for about two years. Took a little side tour to be a police officer for a little while, but I came back to the light side. And came back to Salem in nineteen ninety-one. I've started out as a firefighter/paramedic. I was EMS coordinator for Salem and sat on the ASA committee back in nineteen ninety-three to about nineteen ninety-six, until I promoted to engineer. Did the engineer job for a few years, promoted to captain in two thousand and two. Then in two thousand and twelve, I promoted to battalion chief. And about three months ago, I was appointed as the interim deputy chief in charge of training in EMS for Salem Fire. Pretty much been around this area my whole life. Was born in Salem Hospital. It was a lot smaller than it is now. And I anticipate that I'll be around probably for a couple more years. I'll have twenty-seven years in September one. And my goal is to put a full thirty in and contribute and change whatever I can while I'm here.
Very good. And so, were you recruited to do this out of Salem Fire Department? Or did you, what was your motivation to be on the ambulance?
My motivation was that it's really an appointment by the fire chief, the position that I'm in. And it could be either myself or the EMS coordinator could sit in this position. But I think that my role as a deputy chief, that I need to be more involved and more in touch with what's going on, rather than getting things secondhand. So, I was more than willing to step up to the plate and be involved in this committee.
Very good. Questions?
Well, I think he pretty well filled in the gaps. What I did get out of it is a long and a lot of experience that he's willing to add to the committee. So, Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we do appoint Robyn Chitwood to Ambulance Service Advisory Committee for a term ending January thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, you're official, too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Two new members. Congratulations. All right, last but not least is an item under Public Works. And this is to consider approval of a proposed framework for agreement on expansion of Woodburn's urban growth boundary. And we'll start out with...
Isn't this where you should say ten years in the making or some?
Oh, it's gotta be more than ten years.
Progressed.
Seventeen, yeah. Ten is just like, nothing. All right, so we have Brandon Reich from Public Works and Scott Norris from Legal Counsel, who will start out. And we do have some folks here from Woodburn. And if you'd like to come up and say a few words as part of this, we'd be happy to do that, too. So, we'll start. Brandon, are you starting?
Will do. For the record, Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. In nineteen ninety-seven, the city of Woodburn entered into periodic review to update its comprehensive plan. It considered an economic study and analysis of residential and employment land needs, its economic development strategy, and other components of its plan, such as transportation, facilities, natural resources, and housing. In two thousand and five, the city submitted the amendments to the comprehensive plan and the urban growth boundary to Marion County for review and approval. The county approved the amendments. In two thousand and seven, the Department of Land Conservation and Development approved the amendments. Subsequently, the urban growth boundary has been, in particular, the amount of land added to the UGB and the location of the land added have been subject to appeals in the court system. The parties to the most recent appellate court case filed in two thousand and eleven have been engaged in court annexed mediation in order to try to resolve the dispute. Representatives of the party earlier this month have agreed to a framework for agreement to resolve the urban growth boundary location, subject to final agreement on the findings to be adopted by the city and the county in support of the proposal. Once the framework were approved by all the parties to it, the city would develop findings for the revised urban growth boundary, and the county would adopt those as well. The framework describes these findings being adopted by September first for the city and October first by the county. The city and county will also enter into an agreement over how the urban reserve area would be managed. The agreement is described by the framework as being entered into by August first. With that background, I'll turn it over to Scott Norris to describe some of the details of the framework.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Scott Norris from the Office of Legal Counsel. There are four features to this agreement. First, property identified as industrial primarily on the west side of I-5, to the west of the current Winco distribution facility, will be included in the urban growth boundary. Second, an area to the south of this industrial property will be designated as an urban reserve. And an urban reserve is not inside the urban growth boundary, but is designated for future inclusion into the urban growth boundary for urban development. Third, there will be what has been called a hard line. Two of these will be placed, one on the west side of Butteville Road, on the western boundary of the expanded UGB, and the other in the northeast corner of the expanded UGB, which will prevent further expansion of the Woodburn UGB beyond this hard line point for the next twenty years. And fourth, two areas to the north and the northeast, which were originally included within the expanded UGB, will not be included. The agreement has gone before the Woodburn City Council, and the Woodburn City Council has approved the agreement. And the mayor, who is here today, has signed the agreement.
Also earlier this week, the Department of Land Conservation and Development signed the agreement.
So, let me ask you a few questions here really quick. Are you ready for questions? Okay, so, Brandon, first of all, maybe just to back up to kind of the one oh one. The county had a role, and I recall this, in two thousand and five, and you mentioned that in your opening remarks, that the, we approved their plan for expanding the urban growth boundary. And I think, I remember we had some meetings here. We had a gentleman, I can't remember his name. You probably remember he was on the city council, too, that we're looking at the population numbers and what would justify it. And we did some adjustments to the population numbers. And then when we actually had everything all lined up, we went up to Woodburn, I believe, and had a hearing up there as a board of commissioners. And we approved their plan. So, now that we're going back into this framework for an agreement, what is the county's role in this? You mentioned developing findings, approving the findings. So, kind of explain why the county, for people that don't understand Oregon's land use system, why the county would be involved in something that's a Woodburn issue.
The county has coordination responsibility among all the cities that are in the county. And when land is added to the urban growth boundary, that land comes from the rural area that the county manages. And so, we have a role to concur and agree in that land being added to the urban growth boundary. The findings that the city would provide will be, will justify the urban growth boundary inclusion under state law. And that's similar to what the county would have to do to justify that being added, under the same state law. So, in this case particularly, we'll work with the city and take their lead on the findings. So, we'll actually have the same set of findings between the city and the county. There may be some additional findings related to our comprehensive plan that we'll make, but that'll be consistent with the information provided by the city.
And there's kind of a template for findings, right, in terms of the types of issues that you look at, that you go through? Can you just maybe give us a snapshot of a couple of those issues? And what you'll be looking at when you're developing the findings?
The, when the city, when the findings are developed, they're primarily, we'll look at the location of the property being added as being able to provide the services and the needs, meet the needs for the city. Also look at whether there are adequate transportation facilities to the property, whether there's anything that would, which not in this case, but like floodplain development, that would limit the amount of the property that could be used, to make sure that the right kind of property is being brought into the city. So, the findings address the right kind of property and the availability of the property to be able to be actually be used, be serviced by sewer and water and aspects like that.
Okay, so for industrial or commercial property, you're looking at some of the needs assessments that had been done in the past for residential? You're looking at what's already available, how this adds to it? How the population numbers justify that level of residential and so forth?
In some ways, residential is easier because it's easier to cite residences on land than industrial or employment land. So, you look at the city and as it grows, over time, it needs more housing units. And you see inside the city, do you have any vacant land? And when you run out of vacant land inside the city, you look at other ways to accommodate some of that population, maybe through different sizes, lot sizes, or accessory dwelling units. You have to do a little bit of look there to see if there's some way to accommodate the population. And you won't be able to accommodate it all that way. And what you can accommodate, you can look for expanding the urban growth boundary. And you need so many homes on so much land to accommodate the population that's coming in. And that's the expansion that you look for residential. When you're looking at employment land for industrial or commercial, it's different because the demand that employers put on land is different than for residential. You want to make sure that that land has certain types of access to major highways or other major roads. Sometimes there's a need for a certain amount of infrastructure, like the pipes serving the property have to be a certain size in order to provide the kinds of services that they're looking at. Transportation can be really significant, depending on the time of day when you've got two, three hundred employees arriving at a job site within a certain framework, then the transportation network can be stressed. So, you look at the transportation to the employment, to the employment land. There's a lot of, a lot of aspects to employment land that are very different than residential. And the city will consider those to some degree. A lot of the findings and information has already been made. It's already there. It's a matter of adjusting it for the changes for the land that's being removed from the urban growth boundary.
So, we were kind of joking at the outset, it's not a really funny joke, it's a sad joke, about the length of time that it's taken for this to finally come forward. Is this normal? I mean, do we have other instances in Marion County where it's taken this long? And just maybe put it in context?
It's completely not normal for the county, but it's somewhat normative for the state. So, in Marion County generally, we've had a number of urban growth boundary expansions for both residential and employment land. Hubbard recently went through. And they go through, a number of cities recently have gone through, but they go through fine. They go through well. This one was different because it's a larger city. It's got a lot of land that they bring in. It's got a lot of population. So, there's a lot more contention over a city like this. Newburgh and Bend and maybe McMinnville to some degree have all had issues over many years trying to bring land into the urban growth boundary. And they're all looking at different levels of resolution for those. Larger cities with more demand for employment in residential land, with more land being brought in. And when that land being brought in is better farmland, then there's more contention over that, and it takes longer. The state has recognized that this is not the way land use is supposed to proceed. And they've actually done a number of things over these last few years to look at. They did the big look a few years ago to look at what the issues are regarding urban growth boundary expansions and bringing land in, rural development, urban development. But right now, they're looking at a whole new process to amend urban growth boundaries. It'll be available to every city outside the metro area. The law specifically doesn't apply to the metro area. It was on purpose. They have their own set of laws that they would go through. And it should be a simpler process. It should be a lot quicker. While this is, not talking a lot quicker, like a year as opposed to fifteen or twenty years. And it should be a lot more straightforward. Anyone should be able to look at it, sit down and look at the information and understand how the final alternatives were arrived at and how the final solution was derived. Should make some intuitive sense to people that, why this expansion is taking place, the trade-offs and decisions the city made, and how the end product came about.
Thank you. So, other questions?
I'd like to say some at the end.
Great, so I do have a question. So, my question is the twenty-year hard line non-expansion. Since it's started in nineteen ninety-six, are we only one year away from that hard line coming down? Or what is, what's the?
Twenty years from when?
Yeah, twenty years from when?
The idea is twenty years, as I understand, the idea is twenty years from the time of this agreement.
So, it'll be forty years from the time of the original application?
From the time of the original UGB expansion, correct. Approximately.
Well, the approval was two thousand and seven.
Or five.
Right.
Oh, five.
Well, oh seven, DLCD. So, it took two years. So, the county approved it in two thousand and five. But is it official when the county approves it or when DLCD approves it?
When DLCD acknowledges it.
Right, so at that point, they should have been able to move forward. That would have been two thousand and seven. So, that was eight years ago.
Correct.
Scott, you mentioned that, to your understanding, is it clear that it's not from the two thousand and seven mark forward? It's from the date of the signed agreement?
That's my, well, that's my understanding of the way the agreement, of what was agreed upon.
I see heads nodding in the back row. And we'll have them come up, too. Any other questions for Scott and Brandon? Thank you, that was good overview. So, let's bring our Woodburn contingent up to share their thoughts on this. Since they made the trip, this is the second time this week they've made the trip, so. It's not that far, right? We come up and see you, so.
Right, it's a few miles and we're all friends anyway.
Right, yeah. So, Mayor Figley, you want to start?
Okay, yes, and just for the record, I am Kathy Figley, Mayor of the City of Woodburn.
And I'm Robert Shields, and I'm city attorney, been representing the city this entire time.
And Jim Hendricks, our Economic and Community Development Director, is also here and available to answer any questions where he's best qualified to answer. We obviously have been at this for many years. I think, I would like to hope that the new improved procedure that supposedly will be available to cities starting next year will prevent the eight or nine years it took to actually get to Marion County and the almost, in the slightly over ten years it took to get to acknowledgement by the commission. I can editorialize about the fact it's taken us this long for a long time, but that's not our primary... not our primary purpose for being here. I would absolutely state that the proposal that was approved by Marion County in 2005, we believe, and the commission at the time believed, and two of you are still here, was a completely responsible and defensible proposal. However, as time has gone on and the court process has been used or abused to prevent any implementation of any of the expansion proposal, we reached the point with the encouragement of DLCD and also by some key legislators to try to enter into mediation. We eventually did enter after some false starts into mediation with a real mediator and we came to the framework that is now before you today for consideration. We are happy with it to the extent that the 100 acre site that has been the bone of contention for a lot of years is included outright as an industrial site, as is some additional adjoining land or additional land adjoining Woodburn's commercial district in the southeast quarter of the interchange. We have, we have been persistent in fighting for inclusion of the industrial land west of the interchange because of its characteristics. It is shovel-ready, Woodburn has excess capacity to, in sewer, water, those services, and in addition now has the newly improved interchange. The property in question is accessible to Highway 219 within only a few hundred feet of the Woodburn interchange. Since it has those characteristics and in addition is next to existing industrial uses, we felt it was a natural site for industrial location. In looking at the changes that have been made from our original proposal, we are comfortable with the urban reserve. These parcels were designated as industrial outright in 2000, in the 2005 proposal, however, these are not shovel-ready. There will need to be some infrastructure improvements, some extension of sewer water and some significant road improvements before those parcels are ripe for development. So we did, we felt quite comfortable in designating them as, you know, for sure later, not now, because practically speaking, they won't develop now because now they're not cost-effective. After some other things happen, they will be very desirable sites, we believe. Of the two sites that were excluded, one of them is a mobile park, which frankly was only included because it does have city water and it could qualify as exception land. However, it's north of McLaren School, the city has no interest in McLaren being part of the city for the simple reason that it's exempt. We have a great working relationship, we have no animosity with McLaren, but there is no reason for us, for McLaren to be part of the Woodburn city limits and the city frankly has no wish to expand further north. We're aware, buried in our almost 10,000 pages of findings, we certainly made some fat findings, including that there is some prime, truly prime farmland up that way and practically speaking, it would be difficult to service and we have no interest in going there. We definitely feel that the residential property being excluded very justifiably could and should be included, however, we are talking about a compromise. And Woodburn does have some available land, it is and it isn't. There is one large site within Woodburn's current UGB, which is undeveloped and has always been intended for residential development. It's appropriate for residential development because it's, it's surrounded by residential development on three sides and parks and schools on the fourth side. And it's in the ownership of a property owner, it will probably not develop in her lifetime, but it probably will soon after she's gone. And it creates a little bit of a distortion, but Woodburn does in fact have a residential land supply in that sense. We, in coming to the proposal before you, it was very important to Woodburn to have an adequate supply of industrial land and employment land. I think as you look at the color-coded map, you'll, you're, it's startling to see how little commercial land is on there. We want to bring in employment land, we feel that's important to our community's financial and economic health, and we also think that's a matter of not only Woodburn's significance, but county-wide significance. It's interesting to have this on the agenda, you know, with, with Chad and Nick, because I think we're talking about some of the same things. You need industrial land in order to have healthy industrial growth and industrial growth is a matter of regional economic significance. That's really all I have to say, and Bob, what, is there anything you would like to add?
I don't have a lot to add, I, I would like to thank the county council's office and, and you at the county. County's been our partner in terms of this long case that we've had. We're looking forward, essentially what you have before you, which I'm sure that our mayor's explained and you understand, is it's a conceptual plan to move forward from a mediation. And mediations always involve compromise, so the next step, we're not taking a land use action today, but in the future, there would be land use actions and we wouldn't have too much comment today other than to say that we look forward to working with the county council's office, to attorneys from the, also from the state and 1,000 Friends of Oregon and their related organizations and to my office. And the mayor's joking that she doesn't really want to be in any meetings involving lawyers and planners and findings, but that's really the next job, I mean, is for the staff and your staff to help with the, basically the, the findings. And we look forward to doing that, we don't have too much other comment other than that we will be setting that up after you authorize this action, including the county council's office and, and thank you to that office and to the board.
And before, just one last thing I would like to say is I would like to thank the assistant county council for his efforts during the mediation. They certainly were a significant contribution to the success of the mediation.
Thank you, it's good to hear. So just two thoughts, one was, and Mayor Figley, you mentioned this, I had the same thought that you did, that it was a little bit ironic to have Sedcor here and Chad making the comment about the shovel-ready industrial property at Mill Creek. And as I was looking out in the audience and seeing you and listening to him, I thought, well, there's also shovel-ready property up in Woodburn that's been kind of in abeyance here for a long time, so this is a movement toward that and, and hearing what he had to say about the expert that was looking at it, I mean, how important that can be to an area, so, so anyway, that wasn't lost on me either. And then the other thought that crossed my mind was, under the idea of compromise, and certainly I appreciate that Woodburn has had to compromise in this in order to move forward, I just wanted to put on the record my recollection that the original plan was also a compromise, that there were people that came to that hearing, and if I recall, there was some land in the south, I think where the school district had actually purchased property already in, in anticipation that there would need to be a school down where the additional residential area would be, and then that land did not come into the proposed urban growth boundary, much to their unhappiness, I think, if I recall that correctly. So, so I think it's important that people listening to this understand that the original plan was not without compromise either, and as you mentioned, certainly was approved by the city of Woodburn, was approved by the, the state land use commission and, and, I believe was responsible and defensible also, but again, in order to move forward, sometimes we have to take a couple steps back and, and this looks like it's a good framework and I'm willing to support it. So, any other comments from my fellow?
If I could now, and I hate to be too mean, but just to give you a little background. So I didn't really know what your conclusion was going to be when, when Woodburn came management update on Monday morning, and I thought, well, if they tell the court or whoever that we're not in agreement, I was going to back you 100% because you'd been absolutely right. But if you're happy, then I get to that theme where I'm happy. But I was happy in 2005 and I think it was the right decision then. And I find it kind of offensive that it turns to the courts to give standing to people that are more interested in precedent and form than what's important to communities, and it's just wrong. I'm happy to hear, and I'm not real aware of, that there's something better coming because there needs to be something coming. This is ridiculous. The city, the city and the community should make this self-determination. As a former mayor, the whole goal was if it's contiguous to your city and makes sense in your plan and you have the infrastructure to support, that's what is designed. It wasn't supposed to be no growth, but controlled growth, and you offered this 10 years ago. So I'm certainly supportive of you. If you had wanted to go the other way, I'd have been supportive of that, and I hope it works out. One last thing, Commissioner Carlson was just talking about, what a wonderful opportunity if we can finish this up. And I hope, legal counsel, I don't prejudice myself in any future hearings, but I, to bring that ground in with the adjacent to the new interchange at Woodburn, there, there could be some wonderful opportunities for Woodburn and Marion County, so that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And before I make a motion, I, I just want to follow up on Commissioner Brentano's comment that, that not only the issue of holding back for 10 years in, in courts, but the amount of public resources, that's, that, that is really sad. The amount of public resources that have been spent to get to where we're at today when there was a solution back in 2005, so I, I just, it, it just is an awe of how much money we spend battling back and forth to things in courts when those dollars could be used for other services. Madam Chair, I'm going to move that we approve the proposed framework for agreement on expansion of Woodburn's urban growth boundary.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the proposed framework for agreement on expansion of Woodburn's urban growth boundary. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, and thank you again for coming today, for coming on Monday, for the hard work that you've done recently to get to where we're at today and for all the hard work that happened before, so.
Thank you.
As you can hear, we're very supportive of all you do. All right, so that is, that concludes our action items, and as I mentioned earlier, there's no public hearing today. Side of the paper, I'm on, all right, well, read our Wednesday to Wednesday calendar. These are meetings where two or three commissioners will be present. Today, it's between 8:30 and 4:00, there's an Economic Vitality Summit at Foothills Church, 975 Fernridge Road, Southeastern Stateon. I believe the commissioners will be coming at different times, just dropping in to catch the flavor of what's going on there. We've just completed our board session here at the Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square. Tomorrow, April 30th at 9:00 a.m. is a one-on-one or five-on-one department head elected official meeting with Shelley Wilkins-Ainger, who's our Marion County Housing Authority Director, that will be in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. Tomorrow evening, April 30th at, from 5:30 to 8:30 is the Swine and Wine Marion County Fair Foundation fundraiser that will be at the Zalinski Home, Scenic Valley Farms, 12423 River Road, North in Jervis. There will be on Friday, May the 1st, May Day, at 7:30 a.m. a community stakeholder meeting at the Capitol, room H278. That will be followed at 11:00 a.m. by a special meeting of the East Salem Suburban District, right? E S S D, you know, East Salem Service District. Board of Directors, I was getting the neighborhood meeting combined with that, in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. On Monday, May the 4th, 8:30 a.m. is the Board of Commissioners Calendar Review, that's in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor, Courthouse Square, followed by management update at 9:00, same place. 2 o'clock still on Monday, May the 4th, is an Oregon State Site Review, and they still haven't put that on the heading, that's for the Health Department, and that's in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor at Courthouse Square. Tuesday, we had a one-on-one, or five-on-one department head elected officials meeting with Colleen Coons-Chafin's Business Services Director, Silverton Conference Room, I think I mentioned that was at 9, from 9:00 to 10:00. Then next Wednesday, May the 6th at 9:00 a.m., we'll be back here in the Senator Hearing Room for our regular Wednesday board session. That will be followed at noon by the Woodburn Marion County Meeting up at Luisa's Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn. And then at 5:00 p.m. is a meet and greet for the new executive director of the Willamette Heritage Center, that will be at the Dye House, 1313 Mill Street in Salem. So, kind of a long list of meetings. Anything?
No, I'm still fired up, I guess. I got it out.
What was that word we learned yesterday, Sam?
Oh, recalca?
Recalcitrant.
We are, but we can't say it.
It's not, it's not a hard to say.
Well, give me, let me have it that way once.
Right, we learned that from Paige Clarkson, or, what is she, deputy district attorney? Is that her title?
Seems like it.
Yeah, she did a nice job yesterday, by the way, explaining things on what, what's going on with legislation with the district attorneys. We are lucky to have Walt as our district attorney and he has some very good staff and Paige is one of them.
Yeah, and hopefully he makes it back to us.
From Baltimore.
Did you hear on the news today that it's going to be the first time in history of a sporting event that they're going to play the game without anybody there?
Yeah, they didn't know who'd get the foul ball. That's sad though, isn't it?
I just saw that, it's amazing.
Lots of relatives in that area.
You have a lot of relatives there? Oh, well, we just can lift our country up in prayer, I mean, it's kind of a sad state of affairs what's happening and, yeah.
Absolutely.
Been a busy week and I'm going to head out to the summit, see what's going on.
I'll be there in the afternoon.
You're going to come later? I'll probably, we'll probably be going like this, because I've got to come back from meetings.
I won't be there till about 1:30.
I have one more fun event, Commissioner Carlson's been up there before.
Oh, you're, oh, you're doing the emcee, are you singing this year?
Well, not without you there, no.
No.
Perhaps it lasts, but I usually.
I may stop by, Sam, I'm not sure how I'm going to.
It's just a nice thing, they give awards, it's in Mill City, North Saniam Chambers Awards Night, but get to meet a lot of people, they'll have a performance and some light refreshments, but I, I just like what I see there in terms of a group of people and, and one in particular, I'll just say his name, Mike Long, and it kind of organizes it.
Golf tournament?
He started a golf tournament, but listen, I mean, just in that little community, that generated $16,000 that they'll be giving away, the scholarship for area youngsters here from, from that, so we participated, my, my boys and I for, and I don't even like to golf, just so you know, but it's just fun and they do such a great job, I like to be part of it.
That's in August, right? They do that tournament?
Mm-hmm, first week in August.
So he was at the town hall meeting, the state of the county meeting?
He might have been at both, was he? Maybe not, but he was at, yes, he was at the town hall.
He was at the summit too.
I thought so.
Yeah.
So he's just active, and there's active people all over the county, but he, he's special.
Yeah, that's great. Well, you have fun up there. I, I enjoyed it that day.
It was a one-time thing, is that what you're telling me?
Well, you know, Johnny, one note, it might be Janet one time, I don't know.
I'd kind of like to somehow save face, they keep bringing it up, I don't know what I do, but I guess time diminishes all faults or something, doesn't it, do anything like that?
So people remember your performance?
Yes.
We should have practiced, I just, you know, yeah, that's, learn, learn the lesson for next time. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, with that, we're adjourned.